All right. Eight oh two, I'd like to call the meeting of eight twenty five, of five twenty eight twenty five to order, and if anybody can join me on the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Clerk Bermodis, if you would please do the roll call.
Yes, good morning. President Powell will be absent for this meeting. Vice President Estrada.
Here.
Director Bianco.
Here.
Director Aguilar.
Here.
And Director Nelson.
Here.
Thank you.
Great, with that, are there any additions, deletions, or adjustments to the agenda?
No, sir, not this morning.
Good. We're gonna move on now to public comment. This is the portion on the agenda where the public can have comment. Are there any members of the public who wish to make comment on items not on the agenda? Don't see any in the public. Any on Zoom?
We don't have Zoom.
We don't have Zoom now, okay, so.
For public comment.
For public comment.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
And you know what, I'm sorry, Mr. Vice President, I realize that my script is gonna take you off. I have you moving to consent when we actually have a special recognition, so if you want to jump to your script on that one.
Okay, so with that, we're gonna move on to recognitions first. And, yeah, I see it, I see it. I just, we only have one person showing up. I saw him in the back. All right. This is for Mr. Jesús Fernández, electrician two, 25 years. A little bit about him, Jesús Fernández has been a dedicated member of CBWD for 25 years, contributing significantly to the region's water management and infrastructure. He began his career as a Sanjero, where for six years he played a crucial role in delivering irrigation water to local farmers, ensuring the vitality of Coachella Valley's agricultural industry. Following his tenure as a Sanjero, he spent a year in the mechanical shop maintaining essential pumps for domestic sanitation and irrigation services. His commitment to operational excellence led him to the electrical shop, where he has since been instrumental in maintaining a wide array of electrical equipment, including lift stations, wells, recharge facilities, and other, and office infrastructures. Known for his proactive approach, he consistently seeks improvements in processes within the electrical shop emphasizing safety and efficiency. His leadership during, during safety tailgate meetings often sparks in-depth discussions and the implementation of enhanced safety measures, reflecting his dedication to the well-being of his team and the evolving demands of the, of electrical maintenance. Beyond his professional achievements, he often speaks fondly of, of his deep love for his family. As he approaches retirement, he looks forward to traveling and spending quality time with his loving wife, visiting family, and embracing the next chapter of life together. His unwavering dedication, continuous pursuit of excellence, and heartfelt commitment to both his work and loved ones have left an.
Indelible.
Indelible mark on all who have had the pleasure of working alongside him. We celebrate his remarkable journey and the legacy he leaves behind. And that's a, that's a hard word. And before we bring him up, I, I've, I've had the pleasure of knowing Mr. Fernández for some, some years now. We, we worked in different capacities, and I really enjoyed working with you, with your family, with your wife, and very proud of everything that you've done. Thank you for your help.
Come on down. Welcome to our game show. I used to wear matching tops and bottoms, we call them khakis, for 28 years. Do you have any comments you'd like to make?
You're welcome.
Well said. Nice parting gifts.
Okay, um, and I'll just read the, the other retirements, just for the record, we have Barbara Thompson, Administrative Assistant, 11 years. Arthur Acuna, Operations Crew Chief, Domestic, 20 years. Chris Thomas, Conservation Program Specialist, one, 21 years. And Mr. Tommy Folks, Engineering Technical Services Supervisor, 31 years. And Omar Ceballos, Engineering Aid, two, 35 years. All great people. I, I don't think a lot of people, or everybody knows that Mr. Tommy Folks is officially retired. I think people are still hearing about it, but I know that he was a very well-known name in this agency, so if he's watching, congratulations to him and to everybody else. Okay, moving on to consent calendar. There any item that the board wishes to pull? If not, is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second.
There's a motion, there's a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I think I hear four, four ayes, so we're good. Moves on. And then, we're gonna move on now to public hearings. And let me situate myself here with these items. All right, so we got the first public hearing. This is item 8A. This is presented by Ms. Carrie Alafont.
So, prior to getting started on item 8A, which is the consideration of a resolution, of necessity for eminent domain proceedings, and we'll get into an explanation of this in a moment, but this is the matter which we would have Director, you know, Bianco.
Refuse.
Yeah. Away from the dais, refuse himself.
So, so I ju, I just wanna say that the, the district has a, a project that they've been working on for a long, long time, and I have a piece of property that sits right next to it, and I am not in for this at all. And so, but the ramifications for the district would cost the district millions of dollars if I fought this. So, I haven't fought this, and we're allowing it to go through, so I just wanted to say that, comment.
Okay, thank you. We will wait for Director Bianco to exit the building, and then we will.
Promise we'll come get you.
Get going with the item. All right, so, before we get into it, I think I have a little bit of a script here that I have to go through, and so I'll start with, with the reading here. So, at this time, staff will provide a presentation on the necessity for the acquisition by eminent domain of a fee interest within certain real property located in the unincorporated area of Mecca in Borushead County, California, and identified as portions of assessed parcel numbers 729-140-111 and 729-140-12 for the Palm Desert Groundwater Replenishment Phase Two mitigation project. Following the presentation, we will open the public hearing. Making the presentation this morning is Carrie Alafont, Director of Engineering. So with that, I think you are up.
Okay, good morning, thank you. So, the item before you today is a resolution of necessity. This is the first step in commencing an eminent domain proceeding. So, I'm just gonna step back for a minute. The Palm Desert Groundwater Replenishment Phase Two project that we're proposing to construct within the Whitewater River Stormwater Channel between Cook Street and Fred Waring. As part of that project, the Army Corps of Engineers is requiring us to do, do some mitigation, wetland mitigation. And so, we've identified this property that's shown on this exhibit here in the, the yellow square. It's approximately three acres, and we need a permanent source of water to feed this wetland project site or mitigation site. So, in order to get a pipeline to this mitigation site, we need to acquire an easement from Anthony Vineyards. So, the connection point for this pipeline is, is shown there where the red line begins, and it's coming off of an irrigation lateral, an existing irrigation lateral, 91.4, and so we would be providing Colorado River water. It's approximately 30 gallons per minute annually to this project site. It's a, it's a very low amount into perpetuity, and the Army Corps of Engineers has, has approved this project along with this permanent water source. So this is a smaller mitigation project, and sometimes it gets mixed up with a larger irrigation, mitigation project that we were calling the Johnson Street Project, which is a 160-acre project that is one of our multiple species habitat conservation plan requirements, and that project was gonna be located in this general area on property that we owned, and we're currently looking at relocating that project to another parcel that's further away from this area due to some concerns from the property owner. So, this smaller one, again, is only three acres, and, and we're looking to, to just get a pipeline easement. So, back in August of 2024, we were prepared to bring a purchase and sale agreement to the board to acquire these, this pipeline easement. However, in accordance with the Political Reform Act and the Government Code, Section 1090, BBK requested formal written advice from the Fair Political Practices Commission, FPPC, on behalf of Director Bianco. Just to get their advice to see if this was a conflict of interest, because the pipeline easements we were, you know, purchasing from Anthony Vineyards, and obviously, he's also a, a director of our board. So, the FPPC came back after approximately three months of going back and forth with, you know, conversations with their attorney and providing substantial information, they came back and they thought that proceeding with the purchase and sale agreement outside of an eminent domain process would be a conflict of interest, but they felt that it was okay to have a court oversee the purchase and sale of this easement, so that it was, so there was no appearance of a conflict of interest. It was all done very transparently. So with all that being said, that's the purpose of this resolution of necessity today. It's to acquire 1.6, 1.26 acres for pipeline easement, and what needs to be done today as part of this public hearing is the board needs to find and determine the following four items, and I'm just, I'm gonna walk through them, and I'm trying, I'm gonna try to be brief, but if you have any questions, please let me know. So finding one is that the public interest and necessity require the proposed project. So, obviously, we've been working for many years on trying to get to construction on the Palm Desert Groundwater Replenishment Facility Phase Two, and that's obviously going to provide many benefits to the community, you know, by replenishing the aquifer to ensure long-term water availability. In order to start construction on the replenishment project, we have to be under construction or be able to start construction on the mitigation site within 90 days. And so, and then there's this domino effect, of course, we can't start construction on the mitigation site until we've identified a permanent source of water. So, we, staff believes that acquiring these pipeline easements are in the public interest and necessity, or so that we can proceed with the overall larger project. And then finding two is the proposed project is planned or located in the manner that will be most compatible with the greatest public good and least private injury. So, we looked at several options of routing this pipeline, but there, there were many issues with going along Avenue 71 and coming down Garfield. There would be multiple property owners, there are encroachments within the public right-of-way that would have to be relocated, and it was, it's obviously a longer route to take. And so, we also looked at drilling a well, but the issue with the well was the water quality. The Army Corps has specific requirements about the quality of the water, and there was some uncertainty that that quality would remain within the parameters that they specified into perpetuity. So, after looking at multiple options, we felt that this option, utilizing an existing access road, would be the most compatible with the greatest public good and the least private injury. So finding three is the property described in the resolution is necessary for the proposed project, and as I've described, you know, this, acquiring this 1.26 acres of easement is necessary in order to build the mitigation site and then in turn be able to build the Palm Desert Groundwater Replenishment Project. And then finding four is that an offer required by Section 7267.2 of the Government Code has been made to the owner or owners of record. So, on March 3rd, 2025, an offer of just compensation required by this section 7267.2 was made to the owner. It was based on an independent appraisal, and the offer was for full market value as determined by the independent appraisal. The owner had, has the, the right to get their own appraisal, and we would reimburse them the $5,000, but the owner did not pursue their own appraisal. We did come to an agreement with the property owner's representative on the purchase of these easement rights. However, we're proposing to, again, acquire the easement interest from the property owner through eminent domain to ensure compliance with the advice from the FPPC. So those are the four findings. So in summary, our recommendation before the board today is to adopt the resolution of necessity, as described in the, in the Board Action Item, and authorize legal counsel to commence an eminent domain proceeding to acquire these subject parcels identified in the, in the staff report. Authorize the General Manager to execute any and all documents in the name of CBWD needed to commence and process the eminent domain proceeding to acquire these parcels, these subject parcels. Authorize the expenditures of $33,400, and then find that the mitigation project is categorically exempt from SEQA under Section 15333. So that concludes my presentation. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer.
I have some general questions. I think you answered it. You said it was, it was already, it was already an access road. I, that's what I, I wanted to know if there was, I didn't know what that crop was there, if it was trees, or, so there's nothing being ripped out for this?
I, I don't believe, there, along Garfield, there may be one or two trees that have, are, are going to be impacted, but it's just.
It's like an access road.
Yeah.
For the most part, okay. And I was, I was, I was thinking about that, just because I know we've had, we've had issues where folks sometimes plant over easements, and I know we've tried to address that before, so I just wanted to know how that rolled into this situation, but it sounds like that's not really an issue here.
No.
Okay. And then, the other thing that I had a question on was just clarification on, this is, this is the project where we thought we had bought some credits?
Correct, yes.
Right?
Mm-hmm.
And, and, and then we didn't, we couldn't buy credits, so then we had to come up with the project?
They, yes, they, the EPA, no, was it the EPA? The CVCC was, we were going to pay them the in lieu fee credits, and then I guess it was the Army Corps of Engineers said.
Yeah.
You're not, you're not doing anything with these fees, and so we're eliminating this in lieu fee credit program.
Okay, all right, so just wanted to make sure I was following the.
Yeah, and, and that's a good point, because we were prepared to pay like 4.5 million
And you went up, it went up, right?
And these in lieu fee credits, whereas installing this pipeline and building this mitigation sites, you know, going to be a half, a half of that.
Okay.
Maybe even a third.
That includes the other bigger project as well?
No, no.
Or just this?
No, just, just, just for the Army Corps itself, for that permit, that 404 permit, that was gonna cost us 4.5 million in these in lieu fee credits. So, we're actually saving money by building this pipeline and building this three-acre mitigation site.
Okay.
It's just we have, we've lost a lot of time.
Yeah.
Okay, and then this is not in any way related to that area where we also had to do some mitigation on property that was near Anthony Vineyards, closer to the Salt and Sea?
That's the larger project that I was.
That's the larger project?
That I was mentioning, the 160 acres that we're relocating, or potentially relocating over to a parcel near Johnson Street.
Okay.
We're doing a feasibility study right now to make sure that that property is going to work.
Okay, so that issue's been resolved?
Right.
And there was a lot bigger?
Right.
Project concern?
It was a lot bigger project.
Okay.
Yeah.
So if that project determines, if that study determines that that site is not feasible, would the, that project then be switched back over to this?
No, I think we'll keep, we'll look for another, we'll, we'll look for a different site. We, we understand that that's a ma, a big concern.
Yeah.
So.
Is the 12-inch pipeline that's proposed in the easement, is that, would that take care of more than three acres? Is that capacity more than?
It.
If, if in the future, the issues between the landowner and, and CBWD goes away, then would, would that 12-inch pipeline allow for expansion on, on this parcel, CBWD parcel?
I don't think so. I, 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 due to the hydraulics, it's pretty, it's, it, the, the size was determined in order to just get that water.
Okay.
To, to this three acres, but it's at the end of the line, and there's, there's not a lot of extra capacity, but there's enough.
Okay.
To make this work.
Yeah, to make 40 gallons a minute?
It's like 30 gallons per minute.
It's not that much.
Yeah, it's not that much.
Okay, thanks.
Carrie, I have a question. It mentions in the staff report that this, when developed, these wetlands will benefit the Salt and Sea watershed.
Um.
And I can't, I'm trying to figure out, cause isn't, isn't this a bit away from the?
It's the wa.
How does it do that?
It's just, it's just the watershed area. It's because it creates this marshy wetland, so, you know, it helps with the wildlife within the Salt and Sea watershed.
In general?
In general.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
Yeah, part of the decision to go here is based on the terrain, the actual type of terrain that's there, and at one point, it was a lot closer to the private property, and when we started hearing concerns, we checked with the Army if it was possible to move it further down slope, closer to the sea, and they were concerned that we were gonna lose the type of terrain if we moved it too far.
Okay.
So, we're kind of at the extent to what they would allow, based on what they were looking for, for that particular type of mitigation. Check, 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 check.
But we did, we moved it 300 feet from the property line.
Thanks, Jim.
Yes, sir.
Just another general comment question. I, I know that during this whole conversation about the 404 permit and the credits that William brought, it's an item over for like a plant, a, a long, kinda like a, a, a planning document on how to, how to.
Oh, deal with the permits?
Yeah, deal, deal with mitigation projects to, to build, I, I, maybe it was to concentrate our effort in a location or something like that. It, so, so is this, is this area, or do we have multiple sites where, where we would try to have mitigation projects to take care of any of those types of permits? Or are they spread out, or is it?
Um, I think he's working on that.
Okay.
Yeah, but I don't know the area.
Cause I was just wondering if, since this is 100 and, this is 136 acres, if we feel like this would be a place where we would just, I mean, back to Director Nelson's point, would, would we expand these three acres to bigger acres as we started to have more mitigation projects?
No, I don't think so, I mean.
No, a lot of that, we're pretty much done with this site because of concerns by the property owner.
Yeah.
Okay.
You know, that's, that's why we're moving the larger Garfield project, trying to move it to Johnson. It has to do with the type of crop here, I think it's organic dates, and they're concerned about birds, and as you develop wetlands or places for, that birds might want to be, there's a concern that the flyover could cause significant problems with the particular organic crops that are there. So, it's, it was quite a bit to just get the three acres with, you know, the attempt to try and relocate the larger project elsewhere. So we're, we're, for as long as those operations take place on the private property, we really are not looking to do anything else on the, on the land that we own.
Do, do we own any property near the Dos, Dos Palmas area?
I don't know.
No?
Off the top of my head.
I believe we do, that's why we've got the project down there at Dos Palmas, but I don't know what.
I don't.
Yeah.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna make any assumptions.
Just, just wondering.
Oh, San Diego.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, any other questions?
No.
No? Do you, do I, this is the time to open up the public hearing?
Yes.
Okay, this is the time and place for a public hearing to receive testimony on the acquisition by eminent domain of a fee interest within the identified portions of assessed parcel numbers 729-140-111 and 729-140-12 for the Palm Desert Groundwater Replenishment Phase Two mitigation project. I hereby declare the public hearing open. Does anyone attending this public hearing wish to be heard? Please give your name and address, and let me, your remarks, three minutes, if there's anybody wishing to make public comment. Okay, seeing none, Ms. Bermodis, do we, have we received any written communications?
No, we have not.
Okay, Councilor Ray, will you please comment on this public hearing?
Yes, Mr. Vice President, on April 15th and April 23rd, 2025, a notice of this hearing was sent to the record owners of the property via regular US mail, certified, received, requested, and personal service. The purpose of this public hearing is for the board to consider and decide each of the following issues. One, whether the public interest and necessity require the proposed project. Two, whether the proposed project is planned and/or located in the manner that will be most compatible with the greatest public good and the least private injury. Three, whether the identified real property is necessary for the proposed project. And four, whether an offer to purchase was made pursuant to the Government Code. The amount of compensation to be paid for the property is not an issue to be decided, and the adoption of a resolution, it will not preclude CBWD from continuing to negotiate with the property owner.
Thank you. There being no further input, I hereby declare the public hearing closed. The board will now take up discussion and consideration to adopt a resolution of necessity for the acquisition by no, by eminent domain of a fee interest within the identified real property for Palm Desert Groundwater Replenishment Phase Two mitigation project. Do any members of the board have any additional questions?
I, I have a question for Jeff.
Okay, go ahead.
So if the landowner opposed this, the, the landowner could come during the public hearing and ha, with their opportunity that we gave them to make comments and.
The landowner or their representative, but not the Director Bianco.
Right.
Could, could come and participate and affect.
Right.
That's the whole purpose of the notice and the letters and the offer.
Okay, all right. That's the only question I have.
But we've been, we've been working very closely with the business manager for Anthony Bianco, for Anthony, Anthony Vineyards, which I believe. But we've been, we've been working very closely with, uh, the business manager for Anthony Bianco, for Anthony, Anthony Vineyards, which I believe is located in Bakersfield.
Yeah.
But there's, there's been quite a lot of conversation.
Okay, good.
Okay, uh, with that, uh, is, um, we're gonna take these, uh, separately, this, different actions. So with that, is there a motion to approve, uh, to adopt resolution number twenty twenty-five, uh, dash zero nine, titled a resolution of necessity of the Board of Directors of the Coachella Valley Water District for the acquisition by eminent domain of a fee interest within certain real property located in the unincorporated area of Riverside County, California, and identified as portions of assessed parcel number seven twenty-nine, one forty, dash zero one, one, and seven twenty-nine, one forty, dash zero twelve, for the Palm Desert groundwater replenishment phase two mitigation project?
I'd, I'd make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a, a, a motion and a second with, uh, uh, you please do roll call?
Yeah, yes.
Thank you. Um, Vice President Estrada?
Yes.
Director Aguilar?
Yes.
And Director Nelson?
Aye.
Thank you. Carrie Zero?
And with, with that, um, uh, Vice President, I would make a motion to authorize the legal counsel to commence the eminent domain proceeding to acquire the easement rights to these two properties listed, uh, for the, uh, benefit of the Palm Desert, uh, groundwater replenishment, uh, site.
And I'm sorry, as well as items three, four, and five?
Um, if we can do them all at the same-
Yeah, I'm sorry. Those can all be taken together. It's not a resolution, so, I'm sorry.
Let's do those. I'd make that motion.
For the balance of the recommendations.
For the balance of the items under this eight, eight.
Thank you.
Okay, so that was a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a, a second, uh, will we please have the roll call?
Vice President Estrada?
Yes.
Director Aguilar?
Yes.
And Director Nelson?
Aye.
Thank you. Three, oh.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Karen.
We can get Director Bianco.
Sir?
Okay, we're gonna move on to eight, B. This is another public hearing regarding CBWD vacancies, recruitment, and retention efforts and compliance with Assembly Bill twenty-five sixty-one. At this time, staff will provide a presentation on the vacancies, recruitment, and retention efforts, uh, and compliance with, uh, this Assembly Bill. Following the presentation, we will open, uh, the public hearing. Uh, making the presentation today is Zachary Baldwin, Human Resources Analyst.
But first, it's Chris. First, me.
Oh, Chris.
Good morning, Vice President Estrada, members of the board. I just wanted to take a brief second to introduce Zach Baldwin, the newest member of our HR team, and he was gonna be making your presentation on twenty-five sixty-one today.
Thank you, Chris.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I hope you're all as excited as I am, cause we're gonna speak about Assembly Bill twenty-five sixty-one right now. Um, specifically how it relates to the district and our recruitment, retention, and, um, vacancy efforts. Uh, what is Assembly Bill twenty-five sixty-one? Essentially effective January first of this year. Government Code Section thirty-five oh two point three was added to the Brown Act. Um, essentially, the Brown Act authorizes local public employees as defined to form, join, and participate in activities of employee organizations of their own choosing for the purpose of representation on matters of labor relations. Uh, these collective bargaining units can oftentimes be referred to as or represented by as unions. Uh, there's a statewide interest in ensuring that public agency operations are appropriately staffed and that high vacancy rates do not undermine public employee labor relations. Essentially, if a bargaining unit has unusually high vacancy rates, um, what is that rate and why is the rate so high? Part of the requirement for the Assembly Bill twenty-five sixty-one is public, uh, agencies are supposed to be presenting information on the following during a public hearing before the governing board at least once per fiscal year. That's what we're doing now. Um, what's to be covered is the status of vacancies, the agency's recruitment and retention efforts, including any potential changes that may, um, need to be made to policies or procedures to address these high vacancy rates. Additionally, if vacancy rates for a bargaining unit, um, reach twenty percent, additional obligations may apply. Uh, the good news is that, as of right now, uh, no district bargaining unit vacancy rates, um, reach twenty percent, they're actually well below. That being said, we'll get started with recruitment, the recruitment aspect of the Assembly Bill. Uh, this is a brief summarization of the district's recruitment and selection process. Typically, we'll start with the, um, submission of the requisition and the planning of the recruitment, followed by the actual job posting and the application filling period. Moving on from that, we would, uh, screen applicants, followed by testing if applicable for the position, um, including first round interviews. If applicable, they'll be followed by second round interviews, um, or selection interviews. Finally, with conditional job offers and pre-employment processes. Turning along with recruitment, per calendar year twenty twenty-four, out of five hundred and seventy budget positions, seventy vacancies were filled, fifty of these being new hires and twelve being promotions. Uh, a large number of the vacancies filled were through new hires, sixty-five percent. Um, of the seventy recruitments that were posted, there were an additional nineteen, but these were internal promotions that didn't fill or present a vacancy in and of themselves. In the end, that gave us a vacancy rate at the end of twenty twenty-four of three point six percent. Vacancy rates as of May fourth of the five hundred and seventy budget positions of the district, we have twenty-eight vacancies as of May fourth, giving us a district-wide vacancy rate of four point nine percent. The status of vacancies as of May fourth are the following. Moving on. That is, once again, twenty-eight vacancies for a vacancy rate of four point nine percent. Moving on from vacancies into retention, calendar year twenty twenty-four, we had tw- uh, forty-eight exit employees for the calendar year. That gives us an eight point eight percent turnover rate, with the large majority of these being resignations at fifty-four percent, followed by retirements, and then finally terminations. Speaking more on to retention, specifically retention efforts, district offers a wide, uh, wider range of retention efforts. This can be employee input and feedback, various number of committees, workplace flexibility. Uh, we have a tremendous number of district publications and newsletters, uh, promotion of organizational staffing growth, employee benefits, employee relations, et cetera. Speaking on hiring challenges and solutions, the district continuously reviews applicable policies, procedures, and recruitment activities to identify any potential obstacles or challenges the district might face in regards to the hiring process and recruitment efforts, as well as making changes in those areas to address any potential obstacles. This could be obstacles with hiring policies, recruitment processes, salaries and benefits, advertising and outreach, job descriptions, classifications, and position requirements, as well as the, um, development of staff themselves. To close out, these hiring and retention efforts contribute to a positive workplace culture here at the district, which is key in allowing the district to attract, engage, and retain top talent. Um, are there any questions or comments regarding the data?
Any questions or comments from the board?
I have a question. Uh, thank you for the presentation. So I noticed in the list of vacancies that there are a number of positions that are showing as either under review, or else, yeah, under review, basically is what they're saying. And I'm wonder, you know, we, we've done pretty substantial classification studies over the last couple of years. So, what does that mean, that those are under review? And how long does that impact the recruitment effort for those positions? Particularly because several of these positions are in engineering and operations.
Great question. I'll pass that on to, um, Scott here, better, uh, answer the question.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Zach.
Hi, good morning, board. Uh, thank you for your question, Director Aguilar. So, under review, um, what we've done, uh, here at the district is we have what's called a PRAC committee, which is a Personnel Review Advisory Committee. That committee is made up or comprised of, of the two Assistant General Managers, Dan Charlton, Robert Chang, and myself. Uh, that committee, uh, is comprised of those three individuals to where when there is a vacancy that comes into play, the department head will come and basically petition their vacant, their vacancy to see if there's, if they want to fill that vacancy at the same classification, or they may have done an organizational assessment within their department, and they may want to change that vacancies. For example, you might have the position that is a supervisor or a crew chief that comes open. And then all of a sudden, it's like, okay, well, maybe we don't need a crew chief. Maybe we need someone, uh, that's, uh, you know, electrician, one or two, versus a crew chief of electric, electrician. So, under review is basically allows that department head to review the necessity, the business need of that classification. So sometimes we fill classifications or we change, I think, uh, the history here is that we change the M and M. Uh, we change the classification based on the business needs. So when it's under review, it means that we have a vacancy, but we may not fill that vacancy at the high level. We may come in and change it to a lower level vacancy. And that's what the under review is. But it's based on that department head and the PRAC committee that makes that decision.
Okay, that, that helps. Thank you, Scott.
But it could also, it could also reorganize the, the district in, in, in where there might be, uh, uh, an increase in responsibility or, yeah, wha- whatever the department head deuses is beneficial to the structure of their organization.
That department. Yes, that is correct. Yes.
Yeah, based on, uh, understanding that we struck a while back, um, the board absolutely controls the number of positions or the number of M and Ms. And then, uh, they have granted the general manager the ability to change the color of those M and Ms based on the needs of the department. And as long as it's in the ordinance as a, as an approved classification, we have the flexibility to move around within that construct. Uh, and, and the PRAC has allowed a greater, uh, opportunity to optimize the number of positions we have or the number of M and Ms that we've got. So we haven't had to ask for a, additional personnel in probably six or seven years.
Before my time. I've never, I've never asked one. Um, but one of the things that the board did approve was the Classification and Compensation Plan. And I will tell you, um, that was, um, that was a great benefit to the district because before, you would have classifications that would be very specialized. And so it'd be very hard to go and find certain classifications or recruit from different agencies because you also have, in the public sector agencies, you have a lot of people that you can't go and poach from another agency because they might have a higher, uh, pension benefit from that agency. If they leave that agency, they have to basically be part of our pension benefit. So you have some, some challenges that come into play with that. But with the classification and compensation, when I was talking about the specialized classifications, one of the things that we did in the class and comp is we broadened those classifications where they weren't so specific. We do have challenges with engineering. Uh, you're gonna have any challenges with those type of, type of classifications. We're in the Coachella Valley, where, uh, you know, the workforce in the Coachella Valley is either, you know, in, in agriculture, farming, hospitality, or seniors that, that come to basically retire. So the workforce is, is very challenging in the Coachella Valley, but we do a really good job of recruiting and hiring. As you can tell, of our vacancy rate and our turnover rate are exceptional. Um, so, you know, I look forward to, you know, continue to bring good news to the district. Uh, but one of those things on the class and comp plan was really making our classifications more broad. So, for example, if you were to go and recruit for someone that's a environmental services analyst, beforehand, that job classification may have been so specific to where you had to have five years of environmental services analytical experience. With a broader classification, we start looking at transferable skills to where maybe someone was an analyst in a different program that we can utilize in environmental services that we may have not used in the past. So, with that classification compensation plan that was, that was, um, uh, approved by the board, it really gives us the flexibility to go out and recruit in these more broader classifications. And then, of course, we have the Flex Class Series, which is another opportunity that we provide internal promotional opportunity development for our staff currently that we didn't have before as well. So those also help. Uh, and then as you saw in the, on the presentation, we do a really good job of, of doing internal promotions with our staff. Um, it's a pretty high number when you look at that based on cities and counties, uh, uh, other local agencies that we're compared with. Um, we do really well on the internal promotion, uh, capability as well.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, we're not seeing any. I hereby declare, well, I think I got ahead of myself here. So, this is the time and place for a public hearing to receive testimony on vacancies, recruitment, and retention efforts and compliance with Assembly Bill number twenty-five sixty-one. I hereby declare the public hearing open. Does anyone attending the public, this public hearing wish to be heard? Please give your name and ad- and, and address and let me your remarks for three minutes. Are there any representatives from the bargaining units who wish to address the board? Not seeing any. Ms. Bermudes, have you, we received any written communications?
No, uh, we have not.
Council for Ray, will you please comment on this public hearing?
Yes, Mr. Vice President, the, the notice requirements for this hearing have been met in that the Human Resources staff has notified the district's bargaining units of this public hearing and advised them of their opportunity to address the war on this matter.
Okay, there being no further input, I hereby declare the public hearing closed. Are there any other questions from the board? Seeing no questions, uh, is there a motion to receive and file this presentation on vacancies, recruitment, and retention efforts and compliance with Assembly Bill number twenty-five sixty-one? Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Can we please have the roll call?
Vice President Estrada?
Yes.
Director Bianco?
Aye.
Director Aguilar?
Yes.
And Director Nelson?
Aye.
Thank you. For roll.
Thank you. Roll. Alright, with that, uh, we're gonna move on to the action calendar. Uh, we'll start off with nine A. Um, I believe all of the next action items are for Mr. Armando Rodriguez, Engineering Manager, so you'll be up for a while. And we'll start up with, uh, nine A.
Thank you, uh, President Estrada, members of the board, audience, and fellow staff. Uh, for the record, my name's Armando Rodriguez with the Engineering Department. And the purpose of this, uh, request is to authorize the general manager to execute task order number three, uh, under the professional service agreement with CDM Smith, uh, to ke- continue the design, engineering design for the water, uh, reclamation plan number ten, uh, headworks improvement project in the amount of hundred, hundred and eighty thousand, nine hundred and twenty. Uh, we're also seeking to, uh, additional funding for activity staff time and to replenish the contingency of, with another hundred thousand for a total request today of three hundred ninety thousand, nine hundred and twenty. Uh, I'll pause to see if there's any specific questions before I continue with my presentation.
Any specific questions?
Uh, there's only, only, but I'll, I'll continue. Uh, as you probably all know, this, uh, headworks facility has been in operation from nineteen seventy-four. Uh, that is, uh, about two years, uh, af- uh, before I was born, so it's, it's quite the age. Um, and, you know, this is the, the most, uh, the very first treatment, all the raw sewage comes in through headworks. Uh, there is a pumping, screening, and grit removal. Uh, this is the most caustic, harshest environment, uh, that the water reclamation has. So as you can see, been in operation since nineteen seventy-four, it can be quite, uh, dueling to, gr- grueling to the equipment. We have done improvements over time, but still, uh, there is a limited reliability and there is a concern in regards to us providing level of service. Uh, for instance, the raw pumping is like twenty-four years old. The screening is about fourteen. The odor control is about thirty-two. In essence, if you would take any, um, equipment, just pick it out with, with blind eyes, on average, we were looking at about twenty-four years old on any equipment here. Uh, so this project is all about redundancy, resiliency, and reestablishing the capacity. The good thing is we're sixty percent complete. Uh, we have done many workshops with operations. Operations staff has been quite uh, wonderful to work with in regards to, uh, collaborating and trying to, um, one, address the, the issue in regards to resiliency, level of service, and capacity. But two, also establish a cost. Initially, we did a design and we costed out. It was eighty million dollars. And we said, wait a minute, we, we can't afford this. We had to really fine tune- said, wait a minute, we can't afford this, we had to really fine tune the need here. So, instead of just doing a blanket replacement, we really went into looking at refurbishing. Now, we have a sixty percent design that is all about refurbishment using existing infrastructure, most of the Headworks structure, and we're looking at a twenty-seven million dollar construction cost now, way, way away from the eighty million dollars. This last design element, it's also about trying to consolidate the odor control structures. There's a couple at the couple within the Headworks facility, and we believe that there's going to be efficiency and also long-term savings, and we can consolidate that. CDM Smith is requesting a hundred ninety million, a hundred ninety thousand to get this done, we believe that that is the benefit for the project, and so here we are asking this request now. With that, I'll I'll conclude my presentation and see if there's additional questions that I might answer.
Sure, so I have a question. Normally on projects, we do, you know, five, ten percent contingency, and this is a thirty percent or greater contingency, what 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 you think you meant?
Yeah, this is a contingency, but keep in mind, we're looking at a design cost somewhere in the one point three million. And so, we're just asking for reestablishing that contingency to help us complete the design from sixty to a hundred percent. It is a little high when you just look at a hundred ninety thousand, but if you look at the overall design and construct design and planning cost of one point three, it's not that that high. I hope that answered your question.
So, in the in the other to get us to sixty percent, did we have contingency fees associated with getting us to that sixty percent design level?
We did, we'd had contingency established as part of original proposal or design proposal that we hired CDM Smith. For us to take a U-turn from that eighty million dollar facility to a twenty-seven million dollar refurbishment facility, we had to use some of that contingency to get us to where we're at now.
Yeah, that make that makes sense, you you had to you had to redesign, you had to go for a different approach once you saw you hit the eighty million.
Right.
And that caused some changes in in the planning effort, I imagine, so. But it ate up it ate up all of your original contingency, what was it also thirty?
Usually, at at least, I don't recall what the original was, but we tried to be somewhere in the five to six percent contingency when we first go out for these types of designs, maximum ten, but when the design costs are really high, we try to come down to to something reasonable between five, seven percent.
Yeah, I I moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion, a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, ayes have it, the motion carries. Next is 9B, also Mr. Armando Rodriguez.
And again, here, we're looking at improving two lift stations, and the action before you hear is to approve a solitation of bids for the construction of Lift Station Eighty One Oh Seven and Lift Station Fifty-Five Twelve, so that we can address, one, odor control, and also relining the wet well. The existing odor control is, in essence, falling apart on both facilities. I have gone to the site, I have looked at the facility, and I can actually get a pencil and poke through the odor vessel. As you can see, one of the lift stations is High One Eleven and Jefferson right next to the Home Depot. This is where we have a lot of sensitive noses or a lot of sensitive environments that we really want not to have this odor facility fail. And and so, we're really looking at, one is addressing a more robust odor control and get get away from the chemical odors that we're killing now, which is would be better off serve with installing a bio bed, which is safer, a lot more robust, and does more efficiency in regards to addressing odor controls at these two sites. And then, at the addition to this, we will be doing relining the wet well, just because that's a huge expense or a huge capital cost in a lift station, one of the most important pieces of equipment, and so we want to be able to conserve that wet well for many generations to come by doing a relining. We anticipate that the construction cost is about two point one million dollars. The this is part of our sanitation fiscal year twenty twenty-six at, I believe, two point one million dollars for for next fiscal year. So, it's all about, again, establishing level service and redundancy, and hopefully you allow us to go out to bid on on this project. And I'll pause my presentation here to see if there's any additional.
Are there any other comments or questions from the board?
I would move approval.
There's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, that moves, moving on to 9C.
Thank you. Again, the request here is to authorize the General Manager to award a construction contract to Caliagua as the lowest responsive responsible bidder in the amount of eighteen million dollars for the construction of Warp Ten Filter Assessment and Repair Project, and authorize the General Manager to execute a Professional Services Agreement with Black and Beach in the amount of seven hundred twenty-nine thousand three hundred ninety. And then, there's additional soft costs associated with project management of three hundred thousand, soil testing at sixty-five thousand, inspection services at seven hundred twenty-five thousand, and a construction contingency here at five percent of nine hundred and three thousand for a total request of twenty million eight hundred and three thousand fifty-five dollars. And I'm sorry if I'm going to sound repetitive, but in essence, we are fixing existing facilities here, and so it's all about reliability, resiliency, redundancy, and capacity, and that's the purpose of this project. Warp Water Reclamation Number Ten provides tertiary treatment, which includes using multimedia gravity filters. The T-one tertiary filter facility has been in operation since nineteen eighty-eight, a little younger than 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 me, but not that far away. And so, we've been doing this filtration for the past thirty-six years, and although the facility is designed for ten MGD, we really can't get a ten MGD through this facility. We only get half of that, five MGD. A lot of it has to do with just a loss of the media. We can only operate three of the six filtration basins. So, like I said before, this project is about establishing capacity, level of service, resiliency, reliability. We can only operate this facility half of what it needs to be. And but we do have another facility that warp two filtration, and the that's also at five M D G, so a total, we between T-one and T-two, we have a capacity of ten MGD, and and we really need this tertiary because we have a lot of non-potable customers, eighteen now, and we can produce about thirteen MGD, so quite at where we at with existing customers. But thanks to your support, we have been expanding non-potable water facility. And so, we are planning to connect twenty-one new non-potable customers here in one point five years. In essence, we're going to be doubling the tertiary needed or the total non-potable water demand to about thirty thousand acre feet, so we really need to expand the T-one facility so that we can meet that threshold of twenty-one additional non-potable customers. So, as part of this project, we're going to replace the multimedia filtration of T-one, move away from the move away from multimedia filtration and go into cot-diss filters. The filters can accommodate future projected flows of fifteen MGD through twenty twenty-four, using the same footprint within the T-one, so there's not a lot of work that needs to be done in demoing, we can actually use the six basins, reallocate them from just the media to cot-diss filters, and be able to meet the demands that we have planned here with the twenty-one additional customers. We believe there is a savings of about five hundred forty-five thousand annually, and because the existing facility does not have any automation, back in nineteen eighty-eight, air pneumatic valves were right, the rave, the rage, everybody wanted those, but after so many years, we it's really hard for us to get parts, it's really hard for us to actually work on all these pneumatic valving and operation. And so, we think if we apply some automation, and we can get an additional savings of about thirty-eight thousand dollars annually. We did advertise a project, and we did have, we advertised a project back in February thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. We did have job walks at the site, we did have a lot of interest. I do understand that we only received one bid. We have worked with Caliagua before here within Warp Four, and they had good references, and their bid came in right at where our engineer estimate was. They're within the same ballpark of eighteen point one million dollars versus eighteen point two for the engineers estimate. So, therefore, staff is recommending that we award this project to Caliagua, and also that we award the PSA to Black and Beach. The project is funded with the Sanitation Compassion Sarge, fifty percent, and then fifty percent for anticipated bond financing. That bond financing is determined by finance at a future date. With that, I'll close to see if there's additional questions that I might answer from the board.
Armando, I want to ask you, when this project was presented to the board for our long-term, one of our long-term projects, because we've we've known this is going to be coming up, what was the original number? Do you know?
I was looking at the staff reports that we had done in the past, just to get a history of, you know, how have we migrated anticipating a question like this. And I think we were at sixteen point seven million on construction cost at that time. I think we're now at, well, the eighteen million dollars now, so it has grown. A lot of it has to just do with inflationary pressures. I'm working hard with operations to control needs.
It's not it's not eighteen, it's twenty point eight.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I was just comparing construction cost.
The total's twenty point eight.
Yes, I was just, yes.
That's that's the real number.
There is soft cost, yes.
There's a lot of soft cost in here. So, in our our five-year CIP, how much did we put in there, the sixteen million?
So, in, let's give me a minute.
The budget shows twenty million one eighty-eight five forty-five.
For for this project?
Yeah, it's in the it's in the BAI report on the second page.
The the budget says that?
Yeah, we we have about thirteen point nine million dollars for next fiscal year, and about sixteen point three million for FY twenty-seven.
So, the twenty million dollars, Jim, is just for this project?
That's, I'm just reading off the BAI, it says Budget Impact, it says, it rolls over onto the top of the second page, it says the project was included included in the proposed budget for the following two fiscal years.
In the amount of twenty million one hundred eighty-eight thousand five hundred forty-five, it's estimated that five oh nine six fifty will be spent this fiscal year, therefore, the request will have no adverse impact on the sanitation fund, twenty-four, twenty-five capital improvement budget.
Okay. Okay, so at least we've we've we year marked twenty million. I mean, I'm going to approve the project, I'm just trying to point out to the board how much things are costing, and so that we, you know, when we look at our five-year CIP, it it, you know, it's.
It grows.
Okay, so so I I just, I I think what you said in in summary is that you're you're handling these filters, you have two filters, and right now, you have a capacity of five MGD, you're going to remove one, you're going to put a new one, and that's going to take you from five to fifteen?
That's going to take us to fifteen, yes.
Okay, and, okay, so that's good. And then you have a savings by removing the the T-two, right? Of about half a million, so. The the one question I have in general, or comment, and it's kind of along the lines of Director Bianco, is, you know, we just heard the previous item, that's going to be, that's the one where this is construction, but you're getting ready for construction also at Warp Ten. That's the one you went from eighty to like twenty-seven million, right? For the Headworks, that's also at Warp Ten?
That's also at Warp Ten, yes.
So, how far are we from that construction, you think, like maybe two years?
We hoped to finalize the design here next fiscal year, at the end fiscal year twenty-six, we hope to come back to the board and to seek authorization to to go out to bid.
Okay.
We'll have a very good number in regards to that, what construction cost estimate is and present that.
So, I put thirty million, maybe it's going to be more by the time we go out of construction, because based on your estimate, so just just in in a few years here, we're putting in fifty million to Warp Ten. And and I get what you're saying, right, it's 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 old, it needs a lot of fixing. But I just wanted to get a sense, is that, does that take care of Warp Ten for into the future, or is there more coming? Or are those are those are those big enough ticket items where we don't need to be doing these types of projects at Warp Ten for the next several years? Because that seems like, as I said, fifty million dollars, that's quite a bit.
It is, it's it's quite quite the capital cost in regards to Warp Ten. These these are the two major facilities that we'd be looking at, our Warp Ten. We we do work with operations every year to assess treatments and where we need to have our our next capital outlay, so that we can keep the level of service and keep the capacity, keep the redundancy. For the next couple of years, these are the two major improvements that we have annotated within the CIP.
Yeah, and and I get the the capacity thing with the with this project, especially because you have some commitments on non-potable. But related to the Headworks, what is there any capacity limitations there, or are you adding more capacity, or you're just kind of refurbishing things? And and if you didn't do it, what would be what would be the issue, what would be the consequence of, is it is it a big operational issue, or are we just trying to upgrade things, or?
With with Headworks, there's a couple concerns that that we have. One, the way the Headworks was constructed, the pumps are substantially hard to access, there is not enough room to work. So, in addition to the age of the pumps, which is hard to maintain, it's also super hard to get to. So, if there's an emergency, we're adding minutes, and and those minutes translate, if there's an SSO, adds to millions to gallons. SSO is a. Sanitary sort of overflow. Thank you. In addition to that, the facility is already at the age of all its equipment, like I said, it was already past twenty-four years. It is the most, Headworks is one of the most ha- not hazardous, but the most. Utilized? The most awfulist of environments with regards to.
Pretty bad spot.
It's the the concentration of orders and the causticness of that facility wears down the equipment drastically. So, we're lucky that most of the equipment has been able to survive here, on average, about twenty-four years. I think it speaks to our operations staff, who've done a great job just trying to stay afloat. But we're getting to the point where we cannot even buy the equipment to replace the equipment that we do have, just because they just don't sell nowhere. To replace the equipment that we do have, uh just because they just don't sell nowhere.
You know, I'll I'll say, I mean, I've toured this facility and, I mean, you have homes everywhere. And, you know, I haven't heard of any complaints, you know, I play golf right there at Tuscana, I ask people. Do you guys even know if there's a sewer plant there, and no one even knows it exists, so that's that's, that's telling you you something. I will say that I think your question is that if we're gonna put fifty million dollars into this, into warp ten. That, that there's, that the next time we ask for millions for this place, that there's gonna be a new board. We won't be stay, we won't, we won't be here on this board, and you're saying another, we need another twenty five million, that's what. Because we could have redone it for eighty, right? I think that's what.
Yeah, I was just, because it, yeah, I was just wondering if there's another big chunk of something that we need to take care of.
Looking at the budget uh that's now in place, the next five years, these are the two largest projects. There is a warp ten M M one twin backup generator, an automatic transfer switch. In twenty eight and twenty nine for about three point five million, and then there's solids handling upgrades for about two hundred thousand. And Carrie's probably gonna come and tell me there's more.
No, I I just wanted to make the point that we've been planning these projects for the last five years or so. And these projects were included in the cost of service study for the sanitation rate. So um I I just want you to feel some level of comfort there that that these costs have been accounted for. Um, in the rates, and we are following through on the projects that we said we were going to do in that cost of service study.
Fair enough.
And and I'll and I'll just kind of put some color on it too, in twenty, I think it was twenty sixteen. We approved twenty six million dollars for the headworks at warp seven and warp four that were totally rebuilt and. You know, new, total new headworks and uh so uh uh the board in twenty forty would probably look at replacement.
You may be, you may still be here.
And just to clarify, there weren't, there wasn't a specific headworks facility at warp seven and warp four.
Yeah, they were new, they were new.
It was, it wasn't a replacement or an upgrade, it was new, it was needed, it was something they didn't have.
Okay, good, any other, thank you for that clarification, any other questions, comments on this item?
The only, the only comment I would have is I'm uh was uh very pleased to see two of the uh subcontractors to be disadvantaged businesses.
Oh, beautiful.
There you go.
There you go. You're welcome.
What makes them disadvantaged?
It has to do with their annual review or revenue, I think, more than anything else.
All right, uh is there a motion to approve this item?
They won't be disadvantaged anymore.
Is there a motion to approve this item?
I'll make a motion.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, that carries.
Forward, thank you.
Uh, thank you, Armando. Okay, um moving on to informational items and reports, ring communications uh to the board. Are filed, uh you have that on your packet, and uh moving on to board comments and requests for future agenda items. Are there um any, well, we'll start with general comments, I'll start off to my right with Director Nelson.
Yeah, none for me.
None? None?
Nope.
No, I don't have any other comments either, and any requests for future agenda items? Not seeing any, we'll move on to board meeting reports, and we'll start off with Director Nelson, you have the 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 first three.
Okay, so um, May thirteenth and fifteenth, Aqua Heather Shippman Conference in Maire. Not really much on the agenda there, I thought um, uh just to report that I thought the best panel that I participated in. Uh, I didn't, I was not on the panel, but that I attended uh was for the San Joaquin Valley Water Districts. They have kind of an ad hoc group and they had um Jason Phillips and um. Uh Jennifer Pierre uh as the panelist, and Steve Torjani, who's a Valley attorney. Um, did a lot of questioning of them about subsidence and regulations and. Uh, it was very good to get their perspectives on on that, um afterwards had a conversation with uh the. One of the names that's being floated around for commissioner. And that was a topic of conversation commissioner uh throughout the panel. Uh, well, throughout the the whole conference there, and so, you know, that position is yet unfilled, uh but Jason's Phillips names. Is uh up for that. Interesting conversation, I also had a great opportunity to talk to Lorraine with C B W D. And uh and Victoria about upcoming um public relations, uh uh communication and messaging. In there. Uh, attended a federal legislation committee meeting, it was um quite active. They had a number of items that they debated uh in the committee, usually they come up with a slate, but uh. Nothing that I was particularly um had a vested interest in. Uh, Region Nine had a conference, it was uh our uh meeting, it was a little weak on content. So that's my report there, Colorado River Board did meet, uh we didn't have a quorum, we couldn't vote on anything. That's the problem when you have uh these weird areas where you have Colorado River, uh I'd rather just see him. Uh, you know, in a standard format somewhere else. And that's about it.
All right, uh moving on to Salt and Sea Conservancy check and Director Aguilar.
Yeah, thank you, that that was just a uh team's call with uh Joe Shane, who's the Assistant Secretary. Uh, for Natural Resources, who is in charge of the conservancy, and um it was mostly to uh brief me on. And and others as well, I think he has a chance to meet with uh other board members, to talk about the timing for the um. Divestation of the conservancy, the first priority is going to be hiring an executive director, which they hope to have in place by the end of this year. Then they'll start the process of um seating the fifteen uh board members, uh then getting down the business, so. Expect that the board will be together first quarter, he does, first quarter of twenty six.
Great, yeah, and I was not, uh I had a last minute thing, I couldn't make it, but we could reach out, so we can see if maybe. We can try to schedule something so I could go over that same, it was, he called it a proposal, right? So, um, all right, thank you for that, but it sounded all good, it it made sense and. When did, when did they wanna? No, that's what I heard, they're giving, they're taking the ten, the ten, right?
They might, they might do a set aside for maybe a million, but it seems highly unlikely.
Yeah. Okay, did he say by when they wanted to get the executive director in?
By the end of the year.
By the end of the year, okay.
Six months.
Because they officially have to call the board together by the first of twenty twenty six, or?
I think that's the deadline for hiring the director, I think they have more time to get the board.
Okay, all right, thank you. Uh, next meeting is uh 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 mine, I I was there, it's a Zoom meeting. And uh we go over our projects, uh it was a pretty quick meeting. Um, I think the things that came out uh of interest, they were kind of the 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 big topics were. Uh, completion of Agony sixty six, uh so that sounds like that's wrapped up and, is that activated? There's water going through there, all right, wonderful, so, beautiful project, thank you for that, that that was, that's a big accomplishment.
Fast.
That was quick. Well, fast.
You told me that the other day.
Well, the construction was fast.
Construction was fast.
The project as a whole, I think, took probably more than seven years, about maybe seven years.
I did, but.
Well, but.
Construction was fast.
Yeah, but the problem is putting the money together, and you know, one of the things that I share with people is that, is that there's no one. Developer that would would have been able to carry a thirty three million dollar project. And the fact that that has been put in place by by grants, um you know, that's gonna be huge for that region. And uh create a lot of benefit for for a lot of different folks. Um, so that was a wonderful project, people were happy to hear about that. Uh, the other one was, we have um, we have this planning grant that um we're gonna use, it's also a few million. And it's gonna allow us to update the um, when we first, when we first identified all of these. Consolidation projects, we we put some um, we put a list of projects together, do some tech memos. And it prioritized about forty two projects and then ranked them on on the basis of priority, and that's. The way we've been kind of rolling them out as we've been getting grant funding, it's, these are the projects that we want to do. So that was in twenty eighteen, so it's been about seven years, eight years, so. We're 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 gonna, we're gonna do an update to that, maybe there's uh new areas that need to get shifted because of new pro- the projects made them closer. Or things like that, so that's something that we'll be working on, and um that 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 was kind of like the the big highlights for me. And so with that, we'll move on to Section Five Contractors meeting.
Yeah, that was held down in Imperial, um it was um. All the Section Five contractors there were represented, as well as uh San Diego was there as well, L A D W P was not. Opening uh conversations about um the background of the. Four hundred and forty thousand acre feet uh potentially um um curtailments from California contractors. As part of a one point two five million acre feet um contribution from the lower basin. Uh, the three states uh to um uh as voluntary adjustments. To uh uh very dry hydrology, uh as you know, the last couple of years uh have been great. Um, on on the river, um but this year is another challenging year. Um, uh, something like sixty percent of runoff, um so it's, it's going to affect uh. Lake levels, and so these conversations are part of the twenty twenty six uh renegotiations, and so. It's um, uh so the contractors are looking at a split uh one point two five. Seven hundred and sixty thousand acre feet for Arizona, four hundred and forty thousand acre feet for California. And then uh two hundred and fifty thousand acre feet from Mexico.
Does the um, does the twenty twenty six guidelines, do they have, do they start in twenty twenty six? Or or they have to be done in twenty twenty six?
They have to be done before twenty twenty six, so they get.
Before twenty twenty six.
Uh, right, so they get implemented, so you're looking at probably uh on a timeline, um I've seen a few timelines. Likely to s- to to shift, I I think, um but you'd have to get something in place with the alternatives. Uh, by uh this, by the end of this year, and so they're looking by uh by the end of twenty twenty five, they're having to. Uh, have um, yeah, an alternatives report. Uh, done by the Bureau of Reclamation for the environmental processes. Which would, which would include potentially a seven basin states um. Suggested operational plan.
And and that, and that needs to be done by January of twenty twenty six?
Uh, needs to be done by uh November, December of twenty twenty five.
Colorado River Water Users Association.
Correct, so, so.
Right.
Is is there a template of what that might look like?
So um, the the negotiations have gone on from um the lower basin doing this one point five million acre feet. And still, you know, just to the one point two five for the three states, two hundred and fifty thousand for Mexico. And those discussions are state department discussions and and haven't even been started. Uh, been suggested, so there's, you know, it's out in the in the public square, but uh the actual negotiations haven't been started. But in that, there's us, uh so the lower basin has said, we'll, we'll do that. Upper basin, what would you like to do uh after that, so, so we, lower basin has committed to one point five. Then what are we gonna do beyond that to get to two to three million acre feet more, uh if hydrology really turns bad?
Two to three million acre feet on top of?
On top of that, correct. And so um it is, um so these discussions have been taking place. And the upper basin says, that's a nice start, lower basin, but you need to do more. Um, and we we take hydrological. Uh, cutbacks every single year, and you just don't understand, and um so that's where we've been at. And so now, those discussions have been really related around lake level operations. And how to operate the lakes, uh Lake Mead and Lake Powell, in terms of what the lower basin will do. By saving the one point five and then what the two states can.
What is, what's the primary thing that they point to when they say that they take cutbacks that we don't understand?
The primary thing that they point to is that um there are a lot of tributaries to the main stem of the Colorado. And so in any given year, uh any one of the tributaries may have uh less of a snowpack. And so those, those landowners on that tributary uh may take a hydrological cut. Because of the fact that uh, you know, their particular river is dry. And and so uh, you know, from my perspective, you know, when you look at California's water system as a whole. Especially uh, you know, the junior partner on the Colorado, they take hydrological cuts every year as well. So does Coachella, because of the fact that we've got a state water project system. That since two thousand and seven has only returned a hundred percent one time in twenty twenty three. So from my perspective, California takes hydrological cuts every single year as well. So the negotiating has pretty much come to a standstill in terms of. Uh, what will the upper basin do beyond the lower basin's one point five million acre foot contribution? So, lake levels has been kind of the operational aspect of that, and so now. Um, the discussion is revolving around uh potentially a percentage based release. Uh, from the upper basin to the lower basin depending on hydrology, much like the state water project system. Um, it, but uh from a lower basin's perspective is, okay, fine. But um you still need to meet compact obligations of eight point two three million acre foot. Per year over ten years, which is eighty two point three million acre feet, and and um. You've probably heard seventy five over ten, well, seventy five is the split of seven point five and seven point five. Between upper and lower basin, but you have to have Mexico in there to get to eight point two three. So, so there's some discussions about going on percentages, and um those discussions would have to. Kind of be wrapped up by November of of this year, and so that's, that's the discussions that are going on now.
It's a lot to do by November.
Yeah, um, yeah.
I I predict that at our, at our, in Las Vegas, they'll, they'll still be dealing with it.
They will, the feds, will they intervene if no agreement is made?
Yeah, so, we'll, we'll see, I I mean, they'll, they need to come up with an alternatives report. To be able to uh, you know, put out on the street for a envi- a N I P A environmental um document. The N I P A environmental document doesn't need to, it's unlike Sequo, it doesn't need to solve the problems. It just, just needs to identify the potential problems.
How much uh, how much say, say does the commissioner have in all this?
So the commissioner, uh I think in this process, the commissioner acts more like a facilitator of negotiations. And operations of of the river, uh I think that the states really drive the process. Because of the fact that they're the contractors and they own the contract and and historically on the river. The s- the states have come together with a consensus based alternative. Lacking a consensus based alternative, there's um, there's, uh the secretary can make some decisions. About what to do and um in terms of operations, and then the states can respond to that. Uh, with uh in a variety of ways that um can.
Did they already?
Either challenge the legality of that, or um, or that, you know, the operations in there, challenge the operations.
The secretary's been appointed?
The secretary has been appointed.
Yeah?
Yeah, and the.
Where is he from, he or she?
North Dakota.
North Dakota, uh the Assistant Secretary of Science.
And Technology has been nominated but not confirmed.
Has been nominated and not confirmed. Has been nominated and not confirmed, and.
Also from one of the Dakotas.
Right, and then Scott Cameron, who is, uh, with the Bureau, with the Bureau, is really, uh, the facilitator between Scott Cameron and David Palumbo, who is, uh, the Assistant, uh, Commissioner. They've been helping to drive the federal side of, I think.
Okay.
Uh, to be honest with you, it's, uh, not going.
It hasn't been going.
And so that's, that's kind of the discussions from, uh, that's my report from the, our Section Five contractors.
It's not going to until the eleventh hour, or twelfth hour.
No, you're right, I, I think, I think you're right.
Thank you for that, good report. Uh, moving on to the two-on-two between CBWD and the City of Cathedral City, Director Aguilar?
Uh, yeah, so, uh, it was a meeting, it was, took many months to get put together, but it was, uh, Vice President Estrada, myself, uh, Mark Carnavale from the council, and Ernesto Guterres. And in addition to covering the standard reports that Jim goes over, um, Kerry was there as well, which was a huge help, because we talked about the sewer conversion project, and did find out, I, I think Kerry knew this, but I did not notice that the, the planning grant, um, that had been applied for at the state level was approved. So we're now able to move to the next step in, um, in planning and design, which is great, because there, this, uh, there are about a thousand homes that really need to be converted, so if we get to that point, um, that would really help the aquifer. So we talked about that, um, and then we also talked about the North Cathedral City flood projects and some easement issues that we have there. And they went over the development activity, and there's actually quite a bit going on there, so, um, it was pretty informative, and, um, anything else to add?
No, it was, it was, it was great, uh, learned a lot about, a lot of projects, um, a lot of potential for growth. It requires some coordination with, with what we need to do, and, uh, I think it was great that we had an update, that we were able to get together.
I mean, we had a spirited discussion about wall heights. We wanted, uh, we're, we're at eight feet, and they, he wanted six, six feet.
We landed on seven.
We landed on seven.
Yeah.
On a case-by-case basis.
Yeah.
That was good, though, everybody was happy. Um, great, are there any other meetings that, uh, anybody would like to add? Not seeing any, um, can we, is there a motion to approve per diem?
So.
Is there a second, there's a second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye, aye.
Great, that passes, um, reports from our general manager.
I have nothing this morning, sir.
From our council.
I will pass as well.
And from our department heads. None. Okay, so with that, uh, we're gonna move on to closed session, and then, uh, we'll be back to adjourn. Okay, um, we're back from closed session with no reportable action, and this adjourns our meeting, thank you.